We're pleased to welcome all of you here with us tonight. And I also like to welcome those who are watching online via the livestream. And to any folks who are watching the recording, which will be beta available at the League of Women Voters Greater Cleveland YouTube channel. I'm Trish Zaim. I'm a member of the Westlake North Olmsted Chapter. Thank you, the two candidates for North Olmsted Ward Three Director of Finance, who will be here with us tonight. Thank you also to the North Olmsted branch of Cuyahoga County Public Library for the use of this space and to all of our chapter volunteers who are staffing this event. In keeping with our longstanding forum traditions, questions for the candidates will be submitted in written form. Everyone should have received a card as you entered this evening to write down your question for our candidates. When you have a question ready, raise your hand and a runner will come and pick up your card. You could also raise your hand if you need another question card. We have two league members at the question sorting table who will be reviewing questions to avoid duplication, to provide a diversity of questions, and to ensure clarity and appropriateness. As I stated earlier, we're recording this program for future viewing on YouTube. And I want to let all of you know that personal recording during the program is forbidden by league policy. You're invited to view and share the forum in its entirety on YouTube, but we also have a prohibition on sharing segments of the forum on social media. Finally, we ask the cooperation of the audience in avoiding expressions of support or opposition to any candidate during today's program. Please remember, the purpose of this evening is to hear from the candidates so that each resident might make their own best informed decision regarding their vote and any vocal interruptions takes away from the candidates. Now, I'd like to introduce you to Cynthia White, who is our moderator this evening. Cynthia White comes to us from Bay Village where she has been chapter chair of the Bay Village, chapter of the Greater Cleveland League of Women Voters for the past six years. She's begun, she began volunteering with the league right after retiring from her position as a psychologist at the Cleveland Clinic 2017. She has found the candidate and issue forums to be her favorite league activities because they offer such an excellent platform for becoming a truly informed voter. I will now turn it over to Ms. White.
That's my guess. Okay, good evening. Thank you, Trish. My name is Cynthia White. Where's my? You got it. Oh, you're a hostess.
My name is Cynthia White, and I will be the moderator this evening. Before we begin tonight's forum, I'd like to explain our format. We have two candidates for one seat of Ward Three of North Olmsted City Council, Mary Gilchrist and Terri Smith. We will begin our forum with two-minute opening statements by the candidates. The candidates will go in alphabetical order, and Ms. Gilchrist will be going first. We will then continue with questions for each candidate to answer. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. We will rotate which candidate answers each question first. There is a timer here in the front who will keep track of the time and let the candidates know when they have 30 seconds and 15 seconds remaining and when their time is up. At the end of the question period, each candidate will give a two-minute closing statement in reverse order, beginning with Mr. Smith. Okay, let's see. You covered those. Finally, we ask the cooperation of the audience in avoiding expressions of support or opposition to any candidate during today's program. Please remember, the purpose of this evening is to hear from the candidates so that each resident can make their own best informed decision regarding their vote, and any vocal interruption takes time away from the candidates. And now, I turn it over to Ms. Gilchrist for her opening statement.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Mary Gilchrist. I have been a resident in the city of North Olmsted for 32 years. I have served as a Ward Three Council Representative since January of 2022. My husband and I chose to raise our eight children in North Olmsted because we love this community. Our family has ancestral ties to North Olmsted, as people in my husband's family tree have been residents in North Olmsted for over 100 years. We are active members of North Olmsted St. Clair's Church, plus we are actively involved in the North Olmsted City Schools. I have a master's degree in nursing and worked as a nurse in the intensive care unit for over 20 years, which taught me that teamwork is essential to achieving positive outcomes. Currently, I work as a family nurse practitioner in a local community hospital where teamwork continues to play a critical role. I believe that working together, we can achieve great things for North Olmsted. I want to keep North Olmsted a great place to live, and that is the reason why I am running for reelection of the Ward Three City Council seat in North Olmsted. Thank you for this opportunity to come and speak tonight.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. My name is Terri Smith and been a resident here in North Olmsted for over 25 years. Married to Erin for 33 years and four sons. A couple of them are here tonight. And they all attended local schools, some St. Richards and then the high school and so on. A member of St. Richards Parish currently, past president of Sandy Ridge Homeowners Association. There's some information on me on the table out there, some more details about my bio. Just wanted to say the opening thing first. Why local government for me? Most people discuss national politics, newspapers, et cetera. I found, I do a lot of speeches where I recite them at different events, and they have a lot to do with freedom and courage, you know, find them in national figures. Through this, I developed a respect for our founding fathers' conclusions in the Constitution and Declaration of Independence. But it was the Federalist Paper 39 where Madison says, "Government should be derived from the great body of the society, not from a favored class of it." So, you know, all of us here today can be part of the government, the ruling body, and so forth. So, that was a note for me to say, well, I can be, I don't have to always put it off to someone else. And as Kevin Carney said in a recording that I saw recently, another League of Women Voters forum, he stressed his blue-collar background. And so, that's just as important as a lawyer's background, et cetera. And same for me, you know, it's, you know, some find national politics interesting, but local can be just as important, I think, if not more important, and should be. So, what are the functions of local government? Federal government is broken up into three things, and, you know, a big one, I think, is the self-defense. But what do we do for local government? You know, we have a policeman, which, you know, internally, but other than that, you know, what do we do? So, 15 seconds? Oh, stop. Okay. To be continued. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. All right. So, let's start with the questions. We'll be starting with Mr. Smith. What experiences do you have that prepares you for the position of council representative?
Well, like I just mentioned, you know, as a citizen, as a resident of a community, we all have a right to participate in that community. And my experience has been, you know, as most people, it's ups and downs. You have some successes, you have some failures, and 30 seconds. So, I've been successful with raising four children and paying different things, paying off my debts, so it's important to be secure. I was the homeowners association president in Ward One, over 225 homes at the time. And through there, I learned how to work with people, and that's some people, you can't please everybody all the time, so you do what you can.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, Ms. Gilchrist.
Could you repeat that question?
Yes. What unique experiences do you bring to the role of city council person?
I believe that being the Ward Three Council Representative with the--
Being the Ward Three Council Representative for the last, since 2022, puts me in a good spot to continue that service to our community.
Okay. Okay, next question. What are the priority issues facing our community, and how would you address them if elected? Ms. Gilchrist.
Issues facing our community right now is things that we're taking care of right now, like in Ward Three, we have issues with water, and we're putting in the EQ basin so that we can hopefully alleviate some of the water issues that people have, residents have in their homes right now when storms come through.
Okay.
How many issues do you want me to bring up?
No, well, you got 30 seconds, probably less now.
I think North Olmsted is doing a great job fixing up our park. It's, and working, working on getting some roads done, like Dover Center Road, which desperately needed to be, to be completed. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Oh, Mr. Smith, what are the priority issues facing our community, and how would you address them if elected?
Well, as I was gathering the signatures to get on the ballot for November, I talked to a number of residents, and I got a mix of responses. Some people said everything's pretty much fine, and they were happy with the city. Others said that, well, you know, there was flooding. They said, "Why, why do we have Olmsted Township water coming into North Olmsted?" They have an eight-inch diameter pipe, and North Olmsted has a six-inch diameter pipe, so they get flooding in their backyard. Another issue was the roads. I mean, that's being addressed, but I guess we have to ask, you know, people say, "Well, those roads are crazy." So, you go from North Olmsted to Westlake, and then they say it's a county road. But, you know, if it's a county road, why is it rough here and smooth there? And it's, the answer, as I got into council, was, well, they negotiate the contracts with the county separately, so that was, but it seems like they should have kind of been proactive to get that road done sooner. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Gilchrist. When you speak to voters of Ward Three, what are the most important issues of concern that voters have?
Safety is always a concern, and I think that, that North Olmsted is, is doing a good job with that. We had some issues with the stop sign over on Barton Bradley, and we put in a flashing light there, so it's more alerted. Drivers will be more alerted to that, so.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Well, I think the, you know, the, what was the question again?
What's a recent problem you've identified, and how would you work on it?
Was that a?
No, was that, that wasn't it, was it?
Just what the main issues are?
Sorry, I put that away. Yeah, how would, when you speak to voters of Ward Three, what are the most important issues that concern voters?
The, as Mary said, the, you know, safety is a big thing, the most important thing. And I think that's pretty good. Our crime rate is, is better than most, but it could be better. You know, police and fire, safety, that is the most important thing you look for in a community next to schools. When we moved here, we, you know, had kids, young kids, so we wanted, you know, we heard that North Olmsted had good schools compared to where we were at Lakewood at the time. And there's just concerns about the cell tower, that you seem to have put that up without some, with a, with a, without citizens. I mean, citizens could have gone to the council meetings, but they didn't. So, you know, it's up to all of us to go to these council meetings and be aware of what's going on, so, you know, be proactive and not complain about what's going on after it's completed. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Smith, you're up first this time. As a member of city council, how would you work to foster unity and diversity in North
I think the city has to find some common goal, and we have to define that. You have to, you know, our first responsibility is to have a safe community. But on top of that, you know, you want to have some type of goal as a community and something that identifies you, and, well, something that can make your family happy, you know, so you pursue happiness and have, so our children, our residents have hope for the future. And to do that, we can either do something that's needed, like some people do things, you know, build a hospital because it's needed, others have, use imagination to make something, which I'll get into at another time. So, so I think it's up to us, it's in your hands, my fellow citizens more than mine, to, as JFK said, to, to find out what these goals are and to work on them together.
Okay, Ms. Gilchrist, how about you? How would you work to foster unity and diversity in North Olmsted as a member of city council?
I think it's important for a city council and to work together with the mayor's staff and city staff to ensure that what is, what is needed is done. Teamwork is always important. Listening is very important, making sure you understand what the other person wants, and that you respect, there are different beliefs, and try to come to a common ground.
Okay, thank you. And you're up again for the next question. What's a recent problem you've identified, and how would you work to address it?
In the city? A recent problem in the city? Okay.
Did I answer?
No, we're going back and forth. Being first is reversed each time, so that, so that not one person's going first every time for the question?
But I didn't answer that question that you, that you just answered.
The diversity one?
Yeah, about diversity. Did I?
Yeah.
Oh, you did?
All right. So, all right, so we're on the recent problem, yeah, a recent problem with the city.
There was-- As a whole? I, I think that working together with, with City Hall, there was an issue with some trees overgrowing the sidewalk, and we were able to get in touch with people who owned the property and get them, working with the directors to get that trimmed back so that our residents would be safe while walking on the sidewalk.
All right. And Mr. Smith, how about you? A recent problem you've identified, and how you would work to address it?
Well, it's a very minor problem, but it's, it's a lesson to us in that any, any law or ordinance resolution is important and should be followed. You know, it was, I saw three political signs in, on someone's, in someone's yard, and from what I could tell, searching internet, you can only have one sign, and it had to be after October 1st. And then I, so I called City Hall to say, "Well, they've got three signs there. It's not October yet, so, you know, just to be fair, shouldn't it be, shouldn't they take, have, put them, take them down, or at least two of them?" They got back to me, City Hall nicely, and said, "Well, it's, that's not the case. The resolution was passed, I think, during COVID, where you could put as many signs as you want in your yard." Just had certain size restrictions, and they couldn't be, they still can't be in the curb lawn, you know, from the sidewalk to the curb. And some of these landscaping signs were in there, and they, I thought they were gonna pull them out. They took a few days, but then they did put them back in to their own yards, not in the curb lawn, so. Small thing, but still important.
Yeah. Thank you. So, Mr. Smith, I think, yes, thank you. What steps would you take to make councils' work more transparent and accessible to residents?
Well, I've got some thoughts on that. The council meetings that I go to, they follow, I guess, Robert's rules, and it's pretty formal. And you might think, well, you know, you, you want more transparency, you just want to, you ask the people up there what they think and go back and forth. But if you do that, you know, sometimes, you know, right now, there's just a few people going up there, you know, residents, but when you get a real hot issue, you can't have that kind of, you know, back and forth. So, it's, I think it's good to stick to the formalities for the, the meetings, but find some other ways to get together and hash things out informally. So, to do that, I think it's just a matter of, you know, it's, being on the present, you know, the president of the homeowners association, people will call you. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Let's see, have you had that one?
No.
Okay, Ms. Gilchrist.
Could you just repeat the question, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Transparency.
What steps would you take to make councils' work more transparent and accessible to residents?
So, actually, we just, we just did something to help the residents of North Olmsted be able to attend council meetings from home. We redid the surround sound and the visualization thing so that everything is recorded and available for the public. They can watch both the committee meetings and the council meetings.
How will you hold yourself accountable to the public, Ms. Gilchrist?
No, it would be--
Yeah, because she was second. Yeah, we were like--
Okay, okay. I maintain honesty and integrity, and if I say I'm gonna do something, I do it. So, if I don't know something, I look it up. Is that what you mean? The question's kind of vague, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what it is. You get to make up what you want to say about it.
So, that's what I'll say.
All right, all right, that sounds good. All right, Mr. Smith, what do you want to say about that? How will you hold yourself accountable to the public?
Well, working in business, I was a computer programmer for 40-some years, and any company, I worked 10 years here, 10 years in another place, and did contracting. All throughout those companies, you have a job description, so you're rated on, you're ranked, you know, graded on how you fulfilled those requirements on the job description. I haven't seen the job description for a city council person yet. I'll have to find out what that is, and then be accountable to residents, my ward residents primarily for that, and then you'll see what that job description is and fulfill those requirements as best I can. Honesty, integrity, and a moral compass.
Okay. Next one for Mr. Smith. What do you think is the biggest infrastructure issue facing our city?
Roads. Like, that is being addressed, but it's, you know, it seems to be taking time. You know, I get people saying, "Well, that, those roads, everyone's complaining about them," and, you know, now Clegg is finished, Dover's still in progress, and Lorraine. I mean, it's an issue because, I mean, it's, it can affect your cars, you know, you're driving down there constantly, and it's like you get suspension problems. So, I think it's a, probably, I mean, I've talked with the mayor and the administration, and it's a matter of, you know, resources versus, you know, other things that have to be done. So, you have to set your priorities, and the council does that, I think, and, but it's, you know, I think the residents view it as, you know, some lag there between what needs to be done and what's being done.
Infrastructure.
What? What steps would you take to make councils' work? No, that we already did that.
Yeah.
What was it?
The infrastructure.
Oh, yeah, what are the priority issues facing our community? Oh, no, 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 no. What do you think is the biggest infrastructure issue of our city?
I think, I think Great Northern Mall is, is in need of, of some support, maybe, and right now, we have worked hard to bring in Texas Roadhouse and the movie theater, and I think that we'll continue to try to, to bring life back to that important aspect of our community. Thank you.
Okay. It is now time for the candidates' closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes, and we will follow the reverse order of the opening, beginning with Mr. Smith.
Thank you, and thank everyone here for coming. Great institutions can be built out of need or out of imagination. My hometown is North Olmsted. This is where I live. But I was born down the road in Elyria. Long before my time, however, there was a trolley accident where kids were killed and disabled. Edgar Allen, a businessman who sold telephone poles in Cleveland surrounding area, was the father of a child that was killed. He and the local Rotary Club raised money to build the first hospital in the nation that focused on disabled children. The organization went on to become Easter Seals, which still exists today as a national nonprofit. My wife Erin and I, we recently drove to Kansas to spend, now, that's an example of something that's needed. My wife Erin and I recently drove to Kansas, spent some time with our son David. He's been a forest firefighter for a number of years out in the western states. And in the off-season, he works as an arborist and licensed massage therapist. On the way, we stopped in a town called Casey, Illinois, and Erin wanted to see the world's largest ball of twine. Who wouldn't want to see that? So, in that town, which had suffered some economic hardships, a native Casey resident thought of building the largest twine ball, rocking chair, golf tee, teeter totter, windchimes, mailbox, et cetera. But it revitalized that town. Jim Boland came up with that idea, and it's just off Route 70, so it's become a booming town for people coming down 70 to make a stop. Can we, as North Olmsted residents, come up with something out of need or imagination to revitalize itself or continue our pleasant growth here? As JFK said in his inaugural address, "In your hands, my fellow citizens, more than mine will rest the failure, success of our course. If elected, I look forward with great zeal to working with council, the administration, and the community where we measure success to the extent to which we can give hope for a peaceful and happy life for our children and each other." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Gilchrist, two-minute closing statement.
I would like to thank the League of Women Voters and the residents of the city of North Olmsted for the opportunity to speak and answer questions from the community tonight. I love this community, and I'm proud to be both a resident of North Olmsted and a current council representative. I will strive to continue to support safety and service to all residents. As a Ward Three Councilwoman, I have supported safety forces to ensure adequate staffing by both police--
by both police and fire are available for residential needs. I have and will continue to support the service department as well to help maintain the essential services that are adequately addressed. I will continue to listen and respond to my residents. I will continue to strive to ensure that our tax dollars are spent wisely, always watchful for ways to save without compromising quality services. By continuing to work together, we will succeed in making positive impacts to the city of North Olmstead. I've enjoyed working as the Ward III Council Representative since 2022 and I ask for your vote on November 5th, 2025. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you again to our candidates for participating in this forum and to our audience for their voting. Okay, so we have more cards at the question table. If anyone has more questions, you can raise your hands and someone will bring you another card for questions directed to the finance director position. Okay, well, let's get started. It'll be the same format. We have two candidates for finance director, Carrie Kopfer and Keegan Redoff. Have I said those correctly?
Close enough. Radoff.
Radoff, sorry. We will begin our forum with two-minute opening statements by the candidates. The candidates will go in alphabetical order with Ms. Kopfer going first. And we will rotate, we will then continue with questions for each candidate to answer and each candidate will have one minute to answer each question and we will rotate which cancer, which candidate answers each question first. There is a timer in front who will keep track of the time and let the candidates know when they have thirty seconds and fifteen seconds remaining and when their time is up. At the end of the question period, each candidate will be given a two-minute closing statement in reverse order, beginning with Mr. Redoff. So let's begin with a two-minute statement by Ms. Kopfer.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Kopfer and I'm honored to serve as the Director of Finance for the city of North Olmstead, a role I've held for twenty-eight years. With over thirty-five years of experience in accounting and finance, including eleven years in the private sector, as a CPA controller and CFO, I bring leadership that's grounded in both technical expertise and public service. Our city is in a transformational period, from shifts in our business landscape to redevelopment opportunities in our retail corridors and our neighborhoods. Now more than ever, we need steady leadership and a clear financial vision with accountability. I've guided North Olmstead through recessions and growth, always focused on protecting your tax dollars and preserving essential services our residents rely on. I've worked with four mayors, three law directors, twenty-five council members, and countless city coworkers to build a legacy of fiscal trust. Under my leadership, we went from unauditable to clean audits and award-winning financial reporting. We've reduced our debt and our reliance on borrowing for annual street improvements and equipment related to that, while building financial flexibility that allows us to respond to the challenges or opportunities without raising tax rates. Moody's raised our bond ratings citing strong financial management, which stretches your tax dollars further. Monthly reports have always been provided to council and the administration. They are also now posted on the city's website along with the annual audited reports. We mail every household the city's popular annual financial report, which presents annual financial information to residents in less technical terms. I'm running for reelection because I bring the spirit, experience, and independent voice needed to ensure continuity, stability, and strong financial stewardship. I'm not just asking for your vote, I'm asking for your continued trust to my proven leadership that delivers measurable results for you.
Mr. Redoff.
Good evening and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's forum. My name is Keegan Radoff and I'm running to be the, to be North Olmstead's next Director of Finance. I've built a career on financial accountability and public service. I hold my CPA license along with advanced certifications such as a Certified Public Financial Officer, a Certified Managerial Accountant, a Certified Government Finance Manager, and I also have my master's in business administration. These aren't just letters after my name, they represent deep knowledge in public finance, government accountability, and responsible budgeting. I also bring perspective, I also bring the perspective of service beyond the office. For six years, I served in the Air National Guard, rising to the rank of Staff Sergeant. That experience taught me discipline, integrity, and commitment to something larger than myself. Those same values guide my approach to public finance. North Olmstead faces challenges, tight budgets, redevelopment, and residents who want to know their money is being managed responsibly. As Director of Finance, I will work to modernize our financial practices and ensure council has timely and accurate financial information to ensure every dollar is used effectively to support the services our community depend on. Throughout my campaign, I received several endorsements from respected organizations such as the Cleveland Building Trades, Teamsters Ohio Drive, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Power in Action, to name a few. I'm not the incumbent and that is a strength. Due to strict charter requirements requiring a CPA license and a minimum of five years in accounting experience, causing nearly no other people to qualify to challenge the incumbent until now, for the first time in sixteen years, North Olmstead has a choice in who they elect as the city's Director of Finance. I bring a fresh perspective paired with strong qualifications. My goal is not only to manage the city's finances, but also to provide council and administration the tools to educate residents about where their tax dollars go and how our financial decisions today shape the future of North Olmstead. I look forward to earning your trust and your vote.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Mr. Redoff, again, what do you see as the role of Director, what do you see the role of Director of Finance to be?
I think the role of the Director of Finance is not only to protect the financial resources of the city, it is also to be a steward for preparing the budget and helping the council and administration to prioritize what they believe are the residents' desires within the budget and what they service, they believe the residents need. It's also to work with our external auditors to help and as, work with our contractors that the city contracts with to help prepare the financial statements so that residents have a transparent view of the city's finances.
Okay. Ms. Kopfer.
I believe the city, could you repeat the question just so I make sure I'm answering it properly? Thank you.
What, what do you see the role of Director of Finance to be?
Well, the role of the Director of Finance is an interesting one. Not all cities are elected, but we are the financial advisor to the mayor and the administration as well as to city council. So we work collaboratively and cooperatively, but we do have a role to play for both legislative and executive branches of government. I also believe that we are here to help make the administration and councils' goals and objectives, what they want to accomplish, help them find ways financially as long as they are sound and professional and meet the goals of what the residents would want. We are supposed to provide that information to them so that they can make an informed decision. I think also, of course, the financial accounting system, preparing accurate records and working with division heads and department heads to make sure that the things that they want to accomplish get done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Kopfer, again. How soon should city financial reports be available to North, North Olmstead residents online, as opposed to how soon are they now available to city council and the mayor? Well, those aren't in opposition.
Are you referring to annual?
Is there only the one?
There's monthly ones as well.
Yeah, so I think we're probably referring to the monthly ones.
Okay. The monthly reports are to be distributed as soon as the accounts are reconciled and that provides monthly information. It does vary depending on when bank information becomes available or if, for example, when we installed the new business, the building department system, things weren't posting properly, the receipts weren't posting properly from their system to our system. So there are sometimes delays, but it's usually within thirty days, the financial statements are available to council and to the administration. And people, the important thing is that this city's financial system, which I helped select and implement, has online real access for all decision-makers and all people at the division level. And I think that that's important so that they have online real-time access to be able to make decisions as they're trying to move their division or department head forward and what they said they were going to accomplish this year in the budget.
Okay, Mr. Redoff.
All right, so in regards to the monthly reports being released, transparency is one of the most important responsibilities of the finance director. Residents deserve to see where their tax dollars are going and they shouldn't have to dig or wait months for that information. Now, my opponent says the city releases monthly financial reports. That is true today, but it's important to note that until I entered the race, the city's website did not consistently post those reports. In fact, if you go back and look at prior years through online archives, you can see that the folders are empty. Monthly reports weren't consistently available before 2025. Even this year, the January 2025 report shows a generation of the report date of April 1st, which tells us it wasn't a priority to get information to the public in a timely way until there was an election opponent watching. I believe transparency shouldn't depend on whether an incumbent has competition, it should be standard practice. If I am elected, I'll make it a priority to ensure financial reports are posted consistently, promptly, and clearly, so every resident has easy access to the information they deserve.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Redoff, again, what financials issues do you see our city facing currently and how would you address them?
I think our city overall, overall does have good financial health. I will give credit where credit is due, but I do think that more accurate forecasting could be completed. I've seen reports where we were expecting the general fund balance to have just forty thousand dollars at the end of 2024. That was not the case. There was nearly three or four million. I think that's leaving money sitting idle. I think it's not allowing us to repave as many roads, it's not allowing us to put more public safety in the streets. I think that we need, conservative budgeting is good, but I think we need more accurate budgeting so that we can make sure that we are planning appropriately for what our services are needed for our residents. Thank you.
If you received a million-dollar grant.
I didn't answer yet.
What?
I didn't answer the question.
Is that the, what financial issues do you see our city facing?
Correct.
And how would you address it?
Well, I think that our city is facing a lot of financial opportunities, both and, and issues, both good and difficult. My biggest concern is that our three top taxpayers are either leaving, have left, or are in the process of leaving in the next couple of years. And municipal income taxes, where our primary resources come from to operate the general fund, we don't have a bunch of tax levies that help safety or whatever. This pays for our safety forces, our service department, and all that. So I think that that's an important financial issue that we're facing. Additionally, obviously, the mall and our retail corridors that we are looking at is, with the retail landscape changing, there are issues there that are going to demand and need financial involvement with the city or drawing people in. And if not, that's gonna be a problem for us and for the schools. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you received a million-dollar grant to use for the city any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why? Ms. Kopfer.
Well, wow.
Let your imagination run.
What I would do with a million dollars is that I would put it into a program that helps safety because I think that that's one of our top issues facing our community and I believe that there are some opportunities and grants that, that we apply for, but they're difficult to get and they take a lot of time to administer. And I think that there are some programs that could really help with cultural issues like you talked about and with crime and other things that are going on in our community that, that we want to address and work together and collaboratively to accomplish that.
Okay. Mr. Redoff, a million dollars.
Yeah, so I've knocked close to two thousand doors myself so far while I've been campaigning. And I'll be honest, the number one thing that comes up is roads. I do agree we need to make sure safety forces are funded, but based on what residents are saying, I would say they'd like to see more roads paved.
Okay. We've sort of gone through the questions here. What's a recent problem you've identified in our city and how would you address it? You personally?
I, if we're going on what residents are saying, again, roads. Another thing residents have concerns about is property taxes. I do think it was great of council to address that last year and reduce the mileage some. I will say that was advocated against by the current Director of Finance to reduce property taxes. I believe the city is in good fiscal health and by the, by her own financial quarterly reports, we've collected sixteen percent more in property taxes than we did last year. So any way that we could address property taxes, that would be what residents want to see. I understand the majority does go to schools, but if we don't need to nickel and dime residents, we shouldn't. Thank you.
Okay. What is a recent problem you've identified in your, in our city and how would you address it? And that's you personally, not, you know, city council or whatever, but.
Right, well, I guess I have to think of like, what can I help control? And I can control the finances of the city and help people be able to get their jobs done. I agree that people do worry about the roads that are coming, that there are roads that need to be done. And we've, we've moved forward, we've done a great program where we've scanned the roads and we've, and we're using technology to help us be more efficient to determine what roads we can do. And through debt management, we are almost through all the old borrowing that has been done on roads and I have been able to. done on roads, and I have been able to reduce the borrowing on the annual reporting or road improvements and equipment so that we can utilize them more for roads. And in the next couple of years, our permanent improvement Street and Storm Fund will be debt-free, and we'll be able to address more roads as- as cost increase.
How has- and this will be for you. How has federal dollars to North Olmsted changed, or what changes do you think are coming, and what would you propose to address those changes?
Well, the federal dollars have been flowing quite handily over the last few years with our ARPA funding and things like that. We have also been successful in numerous grants, federal grants. I do think that grant dollars will be drying up. That was acknowledged, that it probably would happen anyway, but I've supported the mayor and council's efforts to have a grant writer and company who has done an amazing job in helping us apply for grants and- and taking the time, we're a small city, and to help us write the grants and actually apply for the grants and help us manage the grants, and they've done a great job, and I think that that is how we're going to address the shortfall in funds that the federal dollars are going to, because they keep finding money for us at the state level and also companies as well and non- excuse me, not-for-profits. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Radoff, how have federal dollars to North Olmsted changed, or what changes do you think are coming? What would you propose to address it?
First, I'd like to say I'm proud that the mayor has gotten ahold of the grants that she has, the mayor's administration. That's really good for us, but I do agree those dollars are probably going to dry up. I think the key is to not budget with the anticipation of them. When they- when they're available, go for them when it makes financial sense. Count those as those once-in-a-lifetime projects that we may be able to do, but we shouldn't prioritize any sort of grant money when it comes to the operations of the city.
Okay, and, Mr. Radoff, you're going first. Can you explain how property taxes are divided between the city, county, and schools?
Yeah, so the schools gets, I believe, 74s, somewhere between 74 and 76 percent. The city gets 8 percent, and the county gets the remainder. So, primarily, property taxes do go to schools. The city does bring in, I believe, about 10 million in property taxes from what the amount they get allocated.
Do you have anything you want to add to that, or sort of facts or anything?
I mean, those are- those are facts, and he obviously read the popular annual financial report where the- where the pie chart was there, so I'm very proud. And I- I wanted to add that- that 8 percent did increase this year. It is 8 percent, but the reason why our taxes dollars increased over the prior year, actual dollars, is because of the reappraisal. The tax rates did not go up. It's the reappraisal that caused that tax, the tax dollars to go up.
And do you have any thoughts on things that could give relief to the homeowners without affecting- adversely affecting the schools, your first?
That is a good question, right?
Yeah.
And I think our state is trying to solve it. However, unfortunately, some- this is the way schools are funded, is through property taxes, and it's- it's a hard issue. You know, there've been ballot issues talked about where, oh, we're just going to eliminate property taxes. Well, that's great, but then how are you going to fund the schools? And so I feel like it's a bigger problem than just North Olmsted can solve alone, but we do have charter millage that does allow us to stay at that level, and we do not have- we have one voted permanent issue for the rec center, and other than that, it's just charter millage that we have for our property tax.
Okay. Mr. Radoff, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mostly agree. Yeah, the property taxes is kind of something that's out of the control for this position. Director of Finance doesn't have a whole lot of say over property taxes. It'd be nice for the state lawmakers to come up with some other ideas. I would appreciate that dearly. What I will say is, you know, council was able to reduce the millage by .3 last year. You know, if the city's in good financial shape, I say keep up initiatives like that if we can afford to do that, and it may not be a lot of relief, but it's better- it's better than nothing.
All right, thank you. All right, so it's time to bring this forum to a close. Time for the candidates' closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes, and we will follow the reverse order of the opening statements, so, Mr. Radoff, you will go first.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's forum, and thank you for everyone in the audience and watching at home for taking time to learn about this important race. I'm Keegan Radoff, and I'm running for Director of Finance because North Olmsted deserves a finance office that's transparent, professional, and accountable to you, the taxpayers. This position isn't just about balancing numbers, it's about trust. You deserve someone who will continually, clearly ask tough questions and make sure every decision is made in your best interest, not just what's easiest or what's always been done. After nearly three decades under the same leadership, it's time for a new approach, one that's proactive, data-driven, and committed to modern best practices, not old habits. I will bring fresh eyes, professional standards, and a commitment to transparency that builds confidence in how your money is managed. I'm not running to maintain the status quo, I'm running to help move North Olmsted forward with open books, clear reporting, and decision guided by facts and data. On November 4th, I ask for your vote, I ask for you to vote for a new perspective, strong oversight, and professional leadership in City Hall. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Kopfer.
I want to thank everyone for coming tonight and the League of Women Voters for putting it on. Tonight, you've heard about the challenges and opportunities facing our city, but you've also heard about the experience and leadership it takes to meet them head-on. I've spent my career making sure North Olmsted's finances are strong, stable, and ready for the future. I've built trust through transparency, earned respect through collaboration, and delivered results through sound financial management. I'm not just a CPA, I'm a proven leader. I've managed multimillion-dollar budgets, implemented cost-saving technologies, and helped guide our city through economic uncertainty without compromising services. I've worked side-by-side with elected officials, department heads, and community leaders to ensure that dollars are spent wisely and decisions are made with you in mind. This role demands more than credentials, it requires experienced leadership, judgment, and informed insight and discernment of how today's financial decisions impact tomorrow's taxpayers as well as today's. I've demonstrated throughout my career, and I'm ready to continue serving with the same dedication and results-driven approach that North Olmsted deserves. I've lived here for 34 years, I've raised my family here, volunteered in our schools and youth programs, I've practiced my faith here, and built relationships that reflect the heart of this community. Please visit my website, reelectkopfer.com, or my Facebook for a more complete list of my key accomplishments that demonstrate what experience brings to this job and the goals for the next term. On November 4th, I ask for your vote to ensure that North Olmsted remains financially strong, forward-thinking, and rooted in trust. Let's keep building a city we're proud to call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give him a round of applause. Hang on, hang on just a second. Can you wait, wait just a second? Okay, so, candidates, if you are able, will you stay to speak with community members who may have additional questions? Okay, this program has been recorded and will be posted on our YouTube website in the coming days. For more information on the other races that will be on the ballot in November, please visit vote411.org, the League's nonpartisan voter guide. Vote411 is a one-stop shop for election-related information. It provides nonpartisan information, including local and statewide issues, candidates, polling locations, election dates and hours, earling voting options, and ID requirements, and the candidate information comes directly from the candidate. So I hope you candidates will go in there and answer the questions in your own words. They're not edited, they're just exactly what the candidate has to say. If you're not already a League member and you have found this evening interesting and worthwhile, please consider joining the League. We're easy to find online at lvwgreatercleveland.org. Thank you, and I will turn it back to Nadia for closing remarks.
Okay. Thank you, Cynthia. Can we give her a round of applause for moderating tonight? So, I apologize, I wasn't here at the beginning of the forum, but my name is Nadia Zaim, and I'm one of the co-chairs of the Westlake North Olmsted Chapter. I want to thank the library for allowing us to use the space, the candidates for participating in tonight, and for all of our wonderful volunteers who made all of this possible, and of course, our wonderful videographers in the back, Lewis and Wendell- Wyndham, who have done a great job recording this for those who can't be here tonight. Okay, just as a side note, I think this was mentioned at the beginning, this recording will be available on our YouTube channel afterwards, but we prohibit the use of it being- using any portions of it rather than the entire video, but please feel fair to share the entire video on your social media with all your friends and family so they can be better informed about these races. Thank you, and don't forget to vote on November 4th, or before that if you want to vote early. Thank you.